Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Raymore City Council Work Session for Monday, December the 6th, 2021. We have one major item on our agenda tonight, and we will be introducing the sheriff here in a minute. Give you a little background, the city and county leadership have met on a couple of occasions with the sheriff to discuss crime issues in our county. And several months ago, he and I had had a personal conversation about his proposal that he's going to bring here tonight. And he's done a lot to kind of clean that up, I guess, so to speak, or not really clean it up, but be able to explain it a little bit better in terms for everybody to understand. I think it has quite a bit of merit, but right now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fearborn to further that introduction.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for the interruption, but Senator Dole died yesterday. If we could observe a moment of silence. Twenty-eight years in the Senate, wounded as part of the 10th Mountain Division in Italy, overcame a bullet that shattered his right side, and he never fully recovered from that. Presidential candidate.
That would be appropriate. Thank you. So we'll now recognize that moment of silence.
No, thank you. I appreciate you bringing it up. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor has indicated, Sheriff Weber has proposed a number of different stages to a program that he has come up with for addressing certain issues concerning law enforcement and crime prevention here in the county. He had the opportunity to meet with all of the city managers of the six major cities here in Cass County that would be involved in this, or actually, all of the mayors from the six cities and the five city managers that are involved with some of the programs he is proposing. As a first step, when we all came together, we recognized that there were, it seemed like there were not just one program, but three distinct programs that he is considering. All three of those would involve intergovernmental agreements. As the council is well aware, intergovernmental agreements have to be approved by a simple majority of the council. So the program that he is proposing tonight is step one of the entire process, which is the formation of what the sheriff is indicating or currently calling the Crime Commission, whether that would be the final name. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about what the group would be called. The group would consist of the six mayors from those six cities and the sheriff. And again, it would come to you all, or will be coming to you all, for your consideration as far as an intergovernmental agreement, hopefully, on the next agenda. We would kind of like to get this moving forward quickly because of some of the reasons why this first group would be formed. And with that, I will turn it over to Sheriff Weber to make the presentation.
Thank you, Jim. I would like to thank you also for setting up not only this meeting, but the previous meetings and the one that we have coming up Wednesday night. I had met with Jim and Jan earlier on the idea, and Jim had already liaised on with some of the city managers and made that a much easier task for me to get them all together. I appreciate that. I did offer to buy barbecue for dinner. I think that helped, so. I did want to make a point of clarity, though, in what you have here on the agenda and what Jim has said. What we had proposed as a crime commission would not only consist of the mayors and myself, but of the county commissioners, the prosecuting attorney. And we've asked that the judiciary be involved, but they have what they may feel would be a conflict, so I don't know that that will actually occur. I do have some handouts here. I apologize. These were all done in-house, like the trifold. Please don't hold us to our artwork if you would pass this to Jim. Thank you. And as Jim mentioned, what we had pitched as a name was a Cass County Crime Commission. We were trying to find a logo. We've actually worked a little bit with a marketing team to find some options that we'll be presenting to the group next Wednesday, trying to find a name that we can all work with. And once again, maybe an image that we can attach to that as some type of a logo. But I'd like to give a little bit of background on why we came to this and why we're here I've been with the sheriff's office for thirty, almost 31 years now. Grew up in what was Belton, a small community many years ago. Graduated from Belton High School, was actually born on Rich Gubauer Air Force Base. I've seen in my career a great deal of change in our community, a lot of good change. We've got a lot of good growth going on right now, a lot of good communities, a lot of good businesses. But I've also seen change that would not be good, and it deals with my line of work, criminal justice system, things that we've been dealing with traditionally throughout our careers. But there's been a change in how it's been dealt with here across the state and our county specifically. One of those things was bond and bond reform that took effect as a result of a Missouri Supreme Court change. And our county got out ahead of it, and we were dealing with a lot of these career criminals that would be arrested multiple times and be let out with nothing more than a signature bond or a minor bond, only to go back into our communities and commit additional crimes. When I took office, you know, as a longtime cop, my solution to that was, we're going to arrest everybody. We're going to arrest all the bad guys, right? But I've come to the realization that we cannot arrest our way out of this situation. Back in 2006, I believe, no, pardon me, 16, we had a meeting with the presiding judge. And when I say "we," I mean the chiefs of police. Mayor Turnbow was at one of those meetings and myself to discuss the issues related to law enforcement in Cass County. Some potential solutions were discussed at that time to include additional paperwork from law enforcement. Not that we weren't doing a lot of paperwork already, but we agreed that another form, another effort on our part to get a bond on these, what we call career criminals, what the state would refer to as prior persistent offenders, we would do additional work to try and get a bond on them, keep them in jail, because we realized that three to 5% of the population that we deal with a lot of times, if we could just keep them in jail, we're going to bring our crime rates down. We left that meeting feeling optimistic, but there was not a change. There was a subsequent meeting at the courthouse with all of the judges. We had many elected officials there, including state reps, prosecuting attorneys, myself, to come back at that issue, because we'd had some cases that were very high-profile in the terms of the issue with bond reform and bond release, or, excuse me, signature bond releases. At that meeting, there was a lot of this from the group. The judges were on one side, law enforcement on the other side. We really got nowhere from that. We kept going back at this issue, talking to the judges, trying to get something done, and it just was not moving. And here, a couple of years ago, Judge Lett and Judge Wagner and I spoke on an issue, specifically Judge Lett. They had dropped the grand juries in our county, which meant that a lot of these cases were starting to backlog. COVID hit. Things got really bad. You know, we're talking, you know, thousands of cases, 1,000, 2,000 cases backlog in our courts. And the judges agreed that it was time to get back into a grand jury process. During that same timeframe, I was talking with Ben Butler's office about the formation of a task force, a task force to address career criminals, prior persistent offenders, to put extra emphasis on those individuals, identifying them, targeting them. Ben Butler was supportive of that idea and worked with me and the judges to come about the idea of, basically, why we're here tonight, the cop end of it, the lawyer end of it, the judge end of it, to try and get maybe some of these issues addressed. However, I realized during the course of this, while we were also working on trying to get a bill passed at the state Capitol, that we needed a little bit extra oomph. That oomph comes in the political pressure of bringing every mayor in the county to bear on issues that are specific to Cass County, whether it be speaking with our judges or prosecutors or state legislators. I've been trying to get a bill passed over the last two sessions that would make every fleeing from law enforcement a felony. Right now, if you flee from law enforcement, you don't hurt or kill someone. It's a misdemeanor. There's no bond. We don't arrest you. Here's your ticket. Go on your way. And that's a terrible message to send to people. And the people that we chase, those career criminals, they run every time. We would like to enhance that reason for them running, to put them in jail. Even discussed with our prosecutor in our courts, the opportunity maybe to put them in jail on that charge if we catch them alone for one year in the county jail and not send them to prison where they're not actually going and doing any time anyway. So we started discussing the issue of the Crime Commission as a non-policy-making board, a board that would come together roughly quarterly, that would talk about these issues that do not just affect one community in our county, not just Raymore, but Belton and Harrisonville in Peculiar, because the bad guys that we're arresting in Peculiar, we're arresting in Harrisonville, we're arresting in Raymore, they don't respect jurisdiction or boundaries. The Crime Commission also, once again, as I mentioned, when we had that issue, and I'll be very honest, the issue of the fleeing felon is very dear to me. I lost a deputy in 1996. When I was a young patrol sergeant, I had a deputy chasing a bad guy, and he had a subsequent wreck, and he died as a result. So I've been pushing very hard on this. COVID hit his last session or the session prior, and the bill, although it made its way through the national course of legislation, it didn't go anywhere. Mike Hafner, our state rep out of Pleasant Hill, picked it up last year, and there was a lot of stuff going on at the Capitol. Again, it didn't get done. He's going to run with it again. But this is where I would like for the Crime Commission to come back in, and this group to come in and write a letter, or one letter could be written and signed off on, to bring a little political weight to an issue that I think is very important for all of our communities, for all the men and women that work in a uniform, that go out and put their life on the line every day and/or night, for our families, for our community in general. So that's kind of where this went. We've been working for some time. I think Mayor and Jim had both mentioned that maybe it wasn't quite as clean or polished when we began. It was kind of an idea. We're very happy to be able to partner with all of the parties involved to try and get it to a point where we can keep moving it forward. I'm here tonight because my oversight was to include police chiefs and mayors originally and not city managers. And obviously, we have a bunch of different municipalities in the county that have different rules, whether it be a charter form of government or not. I'm thankful, once again, that Jim stepped in and organized some of this, because it gets us a little further down the road. That's it. And I know I've thrown out a lot of information there real quick. I'd rather just entertain questions. But what you have is a rough draft resolution in front of you that we would like to have the mayors of the listed municipality sign. We do not want to exclude the small municipalities of Archie and Drexel and Cleveland and Creighton, all the other ones. We would like for them to participate as well. But we feel the core of this group, the board of this group, should be those agencies represented, the municipalities represented in this resolution. And then, once again, the county commission, prosecuting attorney, and myself. And then, the trifold was just kind of an idea, if you get something out there as an education material. We'll work on that as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
And one of the reasons for wanting to get this, and I had brought this up to the larger group, one of the reasons for wanting to get this step one, you'll see some of, like, step two and step three items referenced within the formation document, but tonight is strictly about this overarching group currently being titled the Crime Commission. The reason for that, as the sheriff has indicated, one of his primary items is the legislation regarding fleeing felons, but at the broader group with all of the mayors there and with the police chiefs there and the city managers, a group with that kind of political affiliation associated with the county as a whole could, in future years, and even in this year, if they're formed up quick enough, actually create a legislative platform every single year for putting those kind of ideas that are Cass County ideas as a whole, coming from the chiefs of police or the elected officials, and get a legislative platform that each year is being introduced to the county's lobbyists to get legislative support for items that are near and dear to all of our hearts. So while the sheriff is currently looking at the fleeing felon one, it could have a broader service aspect if the group is formed up. And so because we're coming into the pre-bill filing period for the next session, we wanted to be sure that if the council is wanting this group and wanting to authorize the mayor to join this group, that we did that as quick as possible. I would suspect, are we probably the first city you've visited as far as being in front of the elected officials?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are we the first city you've visited?
We are. We have met individually with mayors and police chiefs, but as a group, we haven't met collectively, no.
And that concludes staff report on these items.
Okay. I'll open up the floor for questions. If anybody has any questions of the sheriff. Yes, Mr. Townsend.
I'll take a stab at it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff Weber. Excellent presentation. I had a quick question on your presentation tonight. You were speaking about the bond reform and how that kind of impacts, you know, the career criminals and their ability to kind of get released on bond, you know, longer and quicker than you would like. But then I, not then, but my question is, you presented tonight that you would like to have the mayors be a part of this commission. And as I read through the materials here, it's an advisory board, you know, for this crime commission as it's currently titled. But if I read this correctly, each of the city's mayors that are here all have chiefs of police in police departments. Why not have the police department chiefs be a part of this commission with their years of experience and training to be on an advisory role as opposed to elected officials who would never, in some act? We are fortunate that our mayor has some prior chief of police experience in two municipalities, but other communities, as elections roll over, may not. What was the decision behind having mayors versus the chiefs of police be on an advisory role?
And that's a good question. And as Jim had mentioned, this is kind of a three-step program. I'll be honest with you. When we began the process, we were looking at a law enforcement presence, a task force of officers from all of the communities working together to identify and apprehend those people that we would classify as our prior persistent offenders, or areas that might be hotspots or known crime, you know, if you've got a rash of car thefts or something like that. That was, you know, that's pretty easy for me to identify. We meet with the police chiefs. I meet with the police chiefs every month. We come together. We have officers that work together on a variety of things. This aspect, though, was nothing more than the political part of it. Once again, that weight that we could bring to bear when we have common issues at the Capitol, and I've been down at the Capitol and testified on this bill a few times and some others, and, you know, I'm one of 115 sheriffs. I don't know how many police chiefs there are in the state. But as a group, a collective of the elected officials, the people that the community have said, "We want you to lead," coming together with a platform of issues that may be specific to Cass County, I think that brings more weight, and that's that political part of it. This is a non-policy. We don't want to be in a situation where we have to have open records, we have to keep meeting minutes. This is kind of an advisory group where we're not going to be creating policy. So some of that may have to be worked out yet, but that's really how it came about. Once again, the front end of that being a task force, which will actually be, in the formation, the back end of it when we get these other things done potentially.
I know you said this is a three-step, three-phase process. What are the other two from a bullet point type discussion?
The second phase of this was originally presented to the mayors by the sheriff, which is an intelligence and analysis formation group. And the group of chiefs in the sheriff's office have actually allowed us, specifically Mr. Zer, because he was at the meeting as well, has been tasked with actually forming up the document that would form the intelligence group. Third step then being what is mentioned in here, but has a long way to go as far as any sort of a formation document, would be the chiefs working with the sheriff on what that final task force would look like if that was ever formed up. So those are the three steps. The next step, we would be, all three of them involve intergovernmental agreements. The next step we would be bringing to you all is the formation of the intelligence analysis group.
Any follow-on, because I'm going to give some other hands.
I do, but let the others answer questions while I formulate my thoughts.
Yeah, I have a question for Sheriff Weber, but a question for Mr. Zer, perhaps first. The sheriff mentioned getting around things like open meetings records and that kind of stuff. That makes me a little nervous. Is that, what are we talking about here?
That was not lost on me. I think you're talking from terms of organization. This is a relatively loose organization that would have opportunities for political involvement only. The reporting back, we are yet to really determine what that's going to look like. Is there going to be vote by the councils with regard to particular actions that would be lobbied for in Jeff City? I don't think I've quite seen how that's going to be arranged at this point. Obviously, our mayor has background experience in law enforcement and can provide input. In other municipalities, those mayors are going to be relying upon their police chiefs to provide them with information on, is this a good plan or is this not a good plan? I don't think that it's a, I don't think it's a killer concept of, hey, we can't do this because, I think it's just a question of, we need to see formation, how that's going to look from the entity standpoint. Honestly, in my world, I'm looking at it from the intelligence side of it right now, so I wasn't really thinking in terms of the political side. The political side is kind of what has been focused on by Sheriff Weber this evening and Mayor Turnbow. Again, they're just going to be loose representatives at the state at that point.
Okay, thank you. And Sheriff Weber, my question to you, so we're already part of the Kansas City Crime Commission. How's this, is this going to conflict with that, or is that going to work together? What's?
No, not at all. And the name, once again, as it's presented, may not be the final name. The Crime Commission is just a name that we came up with, the Cass County Crime Commission. Actually, I think when we probably meet on Wednesday, I think we have a marketing firm that's put together about half a dozen different names that might be something to choose from. But the role we're talking about, look, in Kansas City, at the police department, they have, you know, stolen auto task force, a drug task force, a violent fugitive task force. We're not big enough in Cass County to encompass all those. But we are big enough to say that we have a constant, and that is, the criminal in all of those crimes are what we would consider a prior persistent offender. You know, I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to digest the state report that came out this year over a seven-year period, five-year period, recidivism in our state where we're seeing 64% of the people in three years released from our prison going back into prison, and in five years, 71%. I can tell you, because everyone in this county that commits a crime, that gets them to prison, comes to my jail, everyone, whether it's in Raymore or Belton, and we're not sending enough people to prison. There's a whole list of reasons for that, mainly, we don't have enough room. But we can't continue to have these criminals habitually committing crime after crime with no punishment and putting them back in the community and thinking it's going to change. So once again, the name Crime Commission, it has a similarity to an organization that's out of Kansas City, but in form and function, it will do nothing similar to that organization.
Think of anything else? Okay, go ahead.
I think probably my number one concern is I really am concerned, like Mr. Townsend said, that our police departments need to be the ones with a voice at the table. I'm very, very concerned about the mayors. I mean, like you said, our mayor has that experience, but many others don't, that their voices would be the ones pushing legislation that deals with law enforcement and crime. So I guess that's my biggest question, is why are we making the mayor the middle man, where maybe we could just have some more voices at the table that would help balance that concern? Echoing the question about the Crime Commission, I think the name, as it stands right now, makes it sound like those two groups are doing the same thing, and sounds like it could be a conflict. I don't know. I guess it seems like I understand this is a very, still kind of in the idea stage, or is this really ready to bring a resolution to the council? It seems like there's still lots of questions to answer.
Maybe if I could take a shot at some of that. Okay, so when the sheriff and I first talked about it, I was looking at it from the perspective that we have tried to assemble the Police Chiefs Association into working toward legislative push down at Jefferson City, and the chiefs are a little bit reticent. They used to be very, very much more active at the legislative level than they are today, and it might be just a change of leadership of the organization. But we did try to get the Chiefs Association, the Mayor's Association did, tried to get the Chiefs Association to push toward not just the specific issue that the sheriff was talking about, but ours is the one that involves the court and getting people to come to court. When they took away the failed-to-appear and the ability of the Department of Revenue to suspend someone's license until they take care of the ticket, once they took that away, there was no reason for somebody to come to court. We were merely asking the state to reinstate that particular authority for the municipal judge to suspend someone's license. We're not going to add another, we get it about the additional charge of failed-to-appear. That was stacking, and we understand underprivileged people were being punished more than others. And so, but if you can take their license away with an opportunity for them to temporarily get a working license so that they can do, go to work to and from, but it's a limited license until they take care of that ticket, then that tells the insurance companies, too, that they're uninsurable because they don't have a driver's license, or they've got some kind of restriction on it. Right now, they don't care if they have a warrant. The insurance companies don't, because they've got a solid driver's license. It's a way to leverage people to get into court, to take care of their tickets. Our case file has grown from about 500 warrants prior 2014 to a standing number of over 2,000 warrants in our files, and it grows every year because nobody's taking care of their tickets. That was one thing that we wanted to try to do as a group, and the Mayor's Association or the Mayor's group that Mayor Slater from Pleasant Valley chairs, is we're still going to pursue that again this year, but if we could be a voice from Cass County in that type of setting, it might add just a little bit more to that, to get that passed there. The current, it's a very crazy thing going on down at Jefferson City. The current atmosphere is that the Attorney General, who's this his legacy legislation from 2014 coming out of Ferguson, is keeping him from allowing the legislators to pass that, because that, he prohibited it in his little bit of legislation, which was, had a trickling effect. It did the same thing with the bail reform. What was the other thing it did? Bail reform. Yeah, I mean, there were several things that happened in there, and we're just trying to get back some of those abilities to put a little bit more teeth into the courts. And from Jeff's perspective, telling, sending a message to the criminals element, too, that if you run from us, it's going to be a felony, is a good one for us to pursue as well, probably a number-one priority for the police. But from a mayor's perspective, we've been trying to, because we hear from the municipal judges, we've been trying to get that passed for the last four years. Hafner's run with it on a couple of occasions and got it to the finish line until Eric Schmidt, who's supposed to be the number-one law enforcement who's supposed to be the number one law enforcement officer in the state, steps in and says it's not happening on my watch. That's just my two cents worth on that. I, that's why I like the idea of, you know, if we could, as a voice from Cass County, talk on those issues. And I know, and the sheriff and I know, and the chief knows, that with the retirement of Judge Rumley, there'll be more law enforcement friendly judges at the county as well, so maybe that bail reform can, on a local level, even though the Supreme Court has thrown it in there on us, maybe the, the local level judges will have an opportunity to put a little more teeth into it. And the checklist he was talking about was a checklist for a repeat offender, if there's a risk to, to the, to the community. And that, that seems to have, we thought that that checklist was going to add to that, but it didn't. Courts didn't pick up on it.
So, follow up. So I have no doubt that the two of you have the training, the background knowledge, the experience to speak to these things and to know what to bring forward to the state. Would you agree that the other mayors are in that same position, or do you anticipate on this board that, I mean, who, who's gonna lead the board with the training and experience of law enforcement when potentially you're not there?
Oh, I can't speak for the other mayors, but I know a lot of them that I work with, Mayor Eileen Weir from Independence, Mayor Ross from Blue Springs, they, they're all getting an earful from their chief, and they're pretty well up to speed on those types of things. So, not all of them are though, I would agree with you, not all of them are.
That's, that's my biggest, that's my biggest concern. My biggest concern is, you know, that, that's, that's outside of most mayors' realms of knowledge and expertise. I'm sure you're gonna hear from the people in your city about what they want, but do they know what needs to happen in law enforcement? And I guess my final question, just wrapping up, is have you met with the police chiefs and what was their response to this?
Chiefs Association, oh, the chiefs in our community?
I'd, I'd let the chief talk to that.
Yeah, and, and I would, I would like to say that by no means was an expectation chiefs would be cut out of any of this. I mean, it would be very similar to what you have here in your municipal government, where the chief is making those determinations on crime in the community and liaising that back to this board. We see that same thing happening. We would like the chiefs to all participate in this, because on the other side of the Crime Commission is the task force, where we want them to be fully participating, where they're going to be assigning people, helping identify needs in the community, specific to Raymore, Belton, wherever that might be, and collaborating on, in the boots-on-the-ground aspect of it.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna share with the sheriff that, the website, the inmate list, that's for the Cass County Jail, that's on your website. If you look at that, if any of you haven't seen it before, it's, it's, it's helpful in multiple ways for people that have family members in the jail that they'd wanna find out what they're doing. But also, if you look at it, there will be people that will be apprehended, and they will have 23, 25 warrants where they have not showed up six times to this city, four times to another city, three times to another city. The people that end, you'll also see as you go down the list, that's the same kind of individual that flees from the police, from the deputies all the time. Because I've looked at that website for a long time, sometimes it's good to know if one of my students' parent is in, and then I know to be kid gloves with them and things like that. But also, sometimes, because I've been an ISS teacher for, since 2005, I know quite a few of the people, usually about six people on the list each week that I know, and, but it definitely shows multiple instances every week where people flee, and that's, that's definitely something that has to stop. And, and all these non, non showing up for, for court, it all goes together, and what it does is it gives the criminals that are career criminals, that talk to other career criminals, they will know which counties they can get away with stuff in. And I think the, the idea here is to let people know not to come to this county to do it, and if that's the case, I'm very supportive.
Yeah, I touch in on what the mayor said. Out of the years of insurance before, when they get suspended, that would come to us all the time. If we saw, we wouldn't write their insurance. If they were suspended or they had an accident or suspension, there's something to do with a ticket, they couldn't ever get their license back until that was resolved. That was a good thing, because they were actually, people would go out and resolve those issues because they didn't have a choice. Then, of course, they got lazy, people can get away with it, they can just drive around with a ticket and 14 summons, like Joe was saying. And let me tell you, that's a good, this is a good program. I'm gonna tell you why, because when you get to Jeff City, they don't wanna hear the policeman, and I'm gonna tell you why, because when they see the police officer and the chiefs, they figure it's a one-sided narrative. They know what they're gonna get, they don't believe, a lot of times when they look at the legislation, they say, well, that's gonna be a one-sided, this way, and it's not gonna have partisanship or anything, but it's not the case, but that's how they look at it. But now if you have elected officials who are voted by the people every two years, three years, they know the people trust them, they, they run their cities, elected officials, and people believe in them in those cities, when you're going down there with these mayors and these people on this thing who are promoting and pushing this for their communities, when legislators start looking at that, it's easier to get a bill on the table, because now they see an openness, they see a, a double-sided narrative here, it's not one, and truly, that's what happens in Jeff City. So it's good that we get all of our elected officials on board that wanna do that, I think it's a good idea, because now they see the strains coming from the inner, from the interior of the city, of the, of the elected officials, from the people, and they know that they have the vote and they have the people of those communities, and they know in their areas, when it comes time to vote, they gotta make sure they know what they're doing, these legislators, and they gotta make sure they're on the right side of that. So that makes it very important to the legislators to make a movement in a positive way, to me, if they know that their backs are against the wall, if they're not pursuing this, that's actually a good plus for the community and the people, by joining the people who have the most votes in these communities. It's a very big positive, I think that's why it'd be a good deal to do this with the mayors and stuff, because that does push that bill that gets on the table farther into the middle, so they can vote on it, they can look at it, and they will work on it. I think you can get a lot of leadway, because you've got elected officials who are saying we're behind it, our cities are behind it, the people are behind it, because they're behind them, and that's what's important I hear here, that's a good thing about this. And, you know, when I talk to a lot of people today, we know, we all know it, people are not saying, when, when will this crime wave that we see in this coun, country come to us? It's not when, it's if, and that's what they're scared of. I mean, not if, it's when, I mean, and people are scared to death of this. You see it all around the country all the time, and we, we have a very solid area, but you know, you can only do so much. As long as this filters in on these criminals, like you said, they're small criminals, but those ones who have 20 warrants, those people come and go and keep their license, those people can just know that there's nothing gonna happen to them, they're gonna keep on doing crime and bigger crime and bigger crime, it'll lead to bigger serious crime. And that's why I like with the sheriff and the chiefs, they try to condense that crime from getting expanded to some of these criminals, trying to contain them, like you said, in the county for a year, get them in there and get them off the streets, because they will create damage and, and wealth, and death and injury, even though they start out small. But I like the idea. I like getting the public, or the elected officials in our community, Cass County, I mean, involved, let them know the people down there in Jeff City know that we speak for the county and the people that elected these people, and that will make a lot more importance to the judiciary down there, to the legislative people, when they see that, they will not just say, oh, it's just the police, one side, let's move on, ignore it. They won't ignore it. They'll have to actually take it with a grain of salt for what it means and start to look at that bill or things that we present to them. They'll get serious about it, because their jobs and their elections, their reelections will be on the line. Trust me, it'll be on the line, because they know that most of the people are wanting this and the cities are doing this, and if they avoid it and things happen, they're the ones who will be out on election day. Trust me, it will happen.
Yes, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate giving me the opportunity to kind of gather my thoughts and hear the conversations tonight. So if I understand the conversation in the presentation tonight, phase one is to address some political issues related to the bonding reform and Senate bill issues that impacted our courts when it comes to some of the licensing and suspensions, suspension of licenses that has kind of removed that ability to issue warrants when violations occur. So, phase one, kind of paraphrasing that. Phase two is the intelligence piece, intelligence gathering piece, and phase three is the task force. I tend to take a long view of, of things, and so hearing those second and third phases, and the assumption is in those phases, we would incur, include the police departments, the chiefs of police, and those who have the actual training in how to review reports and studies and trends and come back with some recommendations to those local municipalities and their police departments. When I see that, I hear there's money, there's, there's money involved, there's people involved, so we can't get to phase two and three without phase one being approved. So, and I see in the brochure that's written here that the Cass County Commission funds that. Is that exclusively through Cass County Sheriff's Department, or is that a partnership, a cost share from communities?
So, when we began the process of the task force formation, the idea, the commissioner for Cass County that lives there in Raymore, Ryan Johnson, had called me about an issue and wanted to talk, and asked me what my thoughts were as it related to crime. This had been, been an idea we'd been kicking around in my office for some time, and we pitched it to him, but we told him that he would have to fund it. So the county commission has agreed to cede this program to begin with at a quarter of a million dollars. I'm not getting any of that money. We're gonna pay for an extra prosecuting attorney to help identify these particular individuals and work specifically on them. We ask for funding for overtime for the municipalities. So if the task force is formed and Raymore had an individual or an officer working on that, the first thing we don't wanna do is take away from their normal shift work that would, they would be here in town. State highway safety grants are, are managed, formed in a way that an officer working it would work off-shift at overtime rate every time he works, would never incur an expensive overtime back to the city. That's how we propose that as well. And there was some original thought that maybe the courts could use some funding for what they deemed to be a special public defender to help expedite some cases through. And while we worked on that idea for a while, Judge Collins came back with some issues happening at the, down at the Capitol and funding with the, the public defender's office, they did not wanna do that. So we still have a little bit of money there, but the idea was, we weren't coming to anybody, we weren't going to any municipalities and saying, we want you to fund anything or do anything for free. We were willing to pay for it all, I think it's that important. So that's currently where it's at.
I see. Now, I appreciate that detailed brief back on the funding piece of it. That sounds like it's, it's a short term, or as funds are avail, and I don't wanna say funds available, but that's not for the life of this program. There's probably gonna be an ask for, I'll just make a statement, I'm not, it's not a necessary question, there may be a point where there's gonna be an ask for funding, because just using our community as a, as a reference point, back in January, we had a staffing study that we're already short, police officers, today's population, and in out years, based on our development and growth projections, you know, we need to grow our police force, and now we have a potential that we have to peel off a couple of those officers to support this second and third phase of this program in some capacity. So, there's concerns I have there. And then, to, to put a bow on it, the authorities behind this commission, those task force, the policy board, you know, or the political board going down to Jeff City to kind of advocate some of the issues that we deem high priority. What authorities, earlier in your presentation, you said there is no authorities that this commission would have over any of these municipalities' police departments, but as I look at the, as it's presented here, you know, you're, you're reviewing and compiling data on public safety and making recommendations to facilitate, you know, criminal justice. Is there an expectation at some point that, you know, any of this local city's codes or policies, police procedures needs to come through this particular body for a consensus before it gets implemented?
That would never have been my vision. I can't say that anybody else that would come to the table would not come up with that idea, but that would never have been my vision. Back to your original point of funding, you know, that, that, right now, we're all struggling in law enforcement to find good qualified people that wanna come into this career field. We are. It's been a challenge, and, and it will continue to be for some time. Most people would say they're short shifted, shorthanded. We feel that, all the municipalities feel that. To your point, we would not be looking to have a full-time officer from any of the agencies on this. We're talking strictly a part-time, come in four hours a week, gather some intel, maybe doing some operations, to the point of being short shifted. If you had, let's say you have a ring of people stealing cars in Raymore, wouldn't it be great if that task force brought in eight, 10, 12? I'm putting 16 members on it. My criminal apprehension unit is gonna be assigned to it permanent, my cost. We brought those in to bring additional resources to bear to assist your municipal agency with that specific crime. We're not trying to take away from what you're doing in Raymore or incur an additional cost for Raymore to have to, to pay to either participate in this group or help somewhere else. What we're saying is, we're gonna provide you the money to put that individual that you deem the proper person to be on that task force on it, we'll pay that salary, and then we'll bring all these other officers in to help you with the issues you may have. I, I, I wanna be very clear on that, there is no expectation we're ever gonna come back to you and ask you for money, and I would also say that any one of these three phases, at some point, you may say, I don't wanna, we don't wanna do that anymore, we don't wanna be in the Crime Commission, we don't wanna be in the Task Force, we don't wanna do the Intelligence. That, it's gonna continue, and we would like that the other two components of that still be something that you would participate in. But as it goes along, there may be issues that come up that I haven't thought of, but once again, that's, we're bringing all these elected officials in, I don't know where they may go with it. My intention was never to ask anybody to fund anything or to direct policy for an individual agency.
Thank you, sir. So, another, sorry.
Kevin wants to talk too, but go ahead.
So my question would be for Mr. Zer. Based on what I've heard on phase one of the county body, Crime Commission, whatever it is, it sounds like its main focus and purpose would be lobbying efforts. Lobbying groups come under heavy regulation at the state and federal level. Is that your perception of this as well? And what, what kinds of issues would we see there?
Lobbying groups do come within the purview of regulations, both state and federal levels. Generally, your local municipalities do have the ability to lobby their legislative bodies in Jeff City. You would have that if you were going to be sending individuals down as part of this Cass County Crime Commission. I would anticipate that they would be presenting themselves to the legislators as I am the blank for the city of, or I am the sheriff of, as opposed to the organization of Cass County Crime Commission. It would be, in my view, a repository for education, and let's organize for the effort to go down there and speak on behalf of our individual communities as a single voice.
Thank you, sir. Kevin?
Yeah, I, just, we've, there's three components to this, but tonight, really, what we're discussing is the first component. And that first component is, as we talk back and forth, is a, a group, would be a group of these six mayors being one voice to, and again, this Crime Commission may be, you know, it's probably, like you said, probably not a title you're gonna use, it could be a Public Safety Board or something like that, using the resources that they have with their, with their current police chiefs and with the sheriff to put together some ideas to, to get the legislature to make our community safer. But again, my understanding is, we're just discussing the first component, whether we wanna be part of the first component on this. Each of the second and third component stand alone on themselves. So, my, am I understanding this right? We could be part of the first and not the rest of them, is, or if we go with this first component, two and three comes along, I'm sure that's what you want, but I'm just trying to clarify each of the three. I'm sure that's what you want, but I'm just trying to clarify each of the three stand on their own merit. Am I understanding that correct?
Jim, you want to answer up on that?
And I think, I think even the sheriff had indicated that if at any time the council decided they did not want to be a part of two or three, that the services of two and three would still be offered to us if we liked them, but we would not necessarily have to formally be a part of those groups. In the interest of full disclosure, as the sheriff had indicated, this actually kind of came to us step three back up to step one. The sheriff acknowledges and a significant amount of my concerns came with the very draft document that had been provided to the chiefs of police for the formation of that group. There, that, that would need a whole lot of work. It's going to need a whole lot of work and a whole lot of input from, and cooperation from the chiefs of police to get to a final document on that. So that's down the road quite a spell before we would be coming back to you on that one. The information, step two, the information and, and analyst group, they actually meet loosely now. There is monthly meeting, at least a monthly meeting of a, a group from each of these entities that actually meets to share intelligence. It would simply be formalizing that particular component on it. Even the resolution that you all are looking at tonight has, has been indicated would still need a significant amount of, from what I'm hearing tonight, a significant amount of change put to it before we actually brought it to the city council as a formalized resolution, to sign the resolution, if you will. But, but I do think that all of the components are in their initial draft form right now, draft only, so that the sheriff can be hearing this kind of feedback as far as where the elected bodies who eventually have to approve this are. And I certainly will be reviewing the notes of this, or the, this meeting tonight. If the council would like to see this on a future legislative agenda to make sure that it was a document that reflected the concerns and the considerations of the council this evening, that would be, and then we would pass that particular draft out back to you all for any other feedback you might have before we actually brought it to you formally on a legislative meeting. Hope that helps.
Anyone else?
And the only reason I said that is I can see this component here. I can see, this makes sense to me. And the other stuff, I still think you're massaging and trying to get things together. So I can see this. I'd like to see, as this transforms and goes and becomes more than an idea, more of a structure. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just don't see enough, this first component though, I do see enough on that.
You know, from my initial contact with the sheriff, I, I got a little focused in on the marketing aspect of this. And I told him that too, that initially I was pretty excited about the idea of, of a group of communities coming together to send a message to the bad guys. We're going to get tough. And we, because we haven't been. I mean, the, the way the legislature has kind of diminished our enforcement authority and, and criminal justice system, it has gotten pretty weak. And that message has gotten out. No longer, when I came here, criminals went to Jackson County to do their crime because they were doing the same thing, going through the rotating door. But here in Cass County, you went to jail and you spent considerable time either in our jail or in prison. And, but it's changed, times have changed. And we need to, we need to change that message. And that was, that was what I was excited about. It was actually the marketing aspect of it, showing us, taking a stronger stance against crime. And that, that's where I was coming from it. Showed my excitement to the, to the, to the sheriff and his initial aspects. Then, we got to talking about, you know, us forming this crime commission. And that's when it became evident to me, I needed to talk to him because you guys have to approve that if you want me to participate in something like that because of the way our charter form of government is, is established. And my authority comes through you. So that's why we're here tonight. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll chew on it for a while and let you know. Sheriff, thank you very much, Sheriff, for your time tonight. Next item on the agenda is appointments, boards and commissions. Do you want to pass those around? So those, that's just a list of reappointments. Most of them are reappointments. The last two on the page are replacements. One for a, an individual that we lost. And then one is being removed due to lack of, of attendance on the last one there. So those are, will be coming to you Monday night. Before they go on the agenda on Thursday, if you have any problems or issues with any of those, please call me. Let me know one way or the other. And if that's, if there's nothing else, oh, you got something, Jim?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to remind the council that you all had chosen to keep the filing period as it exists within our existing code and charter. You may be hearing a whole bunch of the other communities, of course, their filing starts tomorrow, only goes for three weeks until December 28th. Ours will actually be, our filing begins two Tuesdays from now. I believe that's 21st and goes for four weeks instead of three through mid-January. So you'll be hearing the formalized announcement of that. We decided we didn't want to put it out. It's been in the last two weekly reports. We didn't want to be doing the whole website thing, put it up on Facebook because we thought people might get a little bit confused because other communities are starting tomorrow. So you'll be seeing all of that come out on Friday. The traditional city clerk's announcement to the city council and the world will come next Monday night during staff reports. And just wanted to alert you all to that. And final item, as I had told you all in closed session relative to my issues, I am now on a very heavy-duty dose of blood thinners, more than likely for the rest of my life. So you can anticipate this room to be tropical from now on. I knew I was going to, I knew that was going to come from one direction. You'll, you'll note I'm actually dressed more casually than usual for that. But, but I'm sure many of you will be pleased with that particular announcement.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything?
If not, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move, we move into executive session to discuss real estate and acquisition matters as authorized by Reserve, revised Missouri statute 610-TAC dot 2021, subparagraf two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Which has been made and seconded, and we move into executive session. Could I have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Townsend?
Yes.
Councilman Circo?
Yes.
Councilman Barber?
Yes.
Councilman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman Burke?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willis Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Berensen?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'll now go into executive session. When we're done with that, we'll be done for the evening.